So those two are gone? Okay. Two motions.
Two motions, yeah. And I've added them here where they belong.
Okay.
See what I mean, within the regular...
So. Motion one, motion two, but they're actually on page...
I have added them in, under, like I said, old business.
Under new business. Okay. And those are just, so at this point, we're just gonna add 'em in, but we're not gonna deal with them at that point.
No, we're doing them here, we just want the motion.
Right. Okay. Alright. And, okay.
Good to be here.
How are ya?
Steve, how are ya?
Okay. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Would ask all the audience to join the school board in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item three, we have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I think, yes, we'll make a motion. I move we add to old business, agenda item B, increasing staff capacity to support communication efforts.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Motion's been made by school board member Walters, seconded by school board member Scheiman. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. School board member Leary.
Yes.
School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Scheiman. School board member Tardif. School board member Mazdin. School board member Johnston. Motion passes six zero. Second adjustment to the agenda, is there a motion? School board member Johnston.
I move we add to new business, agenda item C, infrastructure steering committee.
We have a motion, is there a second? Motion's been, motion's been made by councilor John, excuse me, school board member Johnston, and seconded by school board member Walters. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. School board member Leary.
Yes.
School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Scheiman.
Yes.
School board member Tardif. School board member Mazdin. And school board member Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Moving on to agenda item number four, the approval of school board meeting minutes dated December 4th, 2019, December 18th, 2019, and January 8th, 2020. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the school board meeting minutes for December 4th, 2019, December 18th, 2019, and January 8th, 2020.
There's been a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by school board member Walters, seconded by school board member Tardif. Any discussion? School board member Walters.
Yeah, I just, one comment I had was on, I didn't have the second page of the January 8th minutes. It just may have been left out of my packet, but I submitted the notes, so I know what they are. So I have my own copy, but it just wasn't on the second page of the minutes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? School board member Johnston.
I'm in the same position with Emily and probably the rest of the board. I also did not get the second page of the minutes for January 8th. And I'm wondering, since that's the case, if maybe we should table that particular minute, those minutes, for approval of those minutes for the next meeting? Because I really would like to have the complete minutes before we voted on it. I don't know exactly how we would rephrase that, but I guess maybe Emily could withdraw her motion and just include the first two minutes in December.
School board member Johnston, are you making a motion that we table this motion in its entirety and just take it up at a later date?
I'm suggesting, and I'll make a motion if that's the proper order of doing things, that we not vote on the minutes from January 8th, because we don't have them complete in front of us at this point in time.
There's been a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes for December 4th and December 18th, and table the meeting, excuse me, table the January 8th minutes, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by school board member Johnston, seconded by school board member Walters. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. School board member Leary.
Yes.
School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Scheiman.
Yes.
School board member Tardif. School board member Mazdin. School board member Johnston. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to agenda item five, correspondence, seeing none. Moving on to agenda item six, public session. I don't have a sheet for public comment, it appears nobody has signed up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak? Seeing no members of the public wishing to speak, moving on to agenda item seven, superintendent's report.
Okay, I'll try to work through this pretty quickly. First of all, I just want to congratulate one of our teachers, Mr. John Goff, the latest HMO teacher of the month. And they put him, I guess that's on a, I don't listen to this radio station, but, I don't know, we'll put this out on the website, but he got teacher of the month. If you don't know Mr. Goff, he's also the lead negotiator for the teacher's side, he's a great guy, and I'll just do a quote, "Mr. Goff is a very compassionate teacher, he really enjoys his job, he always makes a student feel welcome, and is always there to help students when needed. He gives a hundred and, a hundred percent to his students and parents and his coworkers. He always does a lot of hands-on activities to help students learn what they're currently working on. He's very understanding, he also loves to joke with his students as well as staff. He's always eagerly, step by step, to help others in need." So, congratulations to John Goff, we'll put this up on our website, but I wanted to let you guys know about that as part of the report. I also want to put a shout out to our data manager, Stacy Nass, she came up with an idea, because I send out this Saco superintendent message all the time, and I know, I know you get bombarded with emails, but I also know some of you like the hard print, so we're putting this in the packet for you, so you can enjoy it in hard print. Okay?
Thanks.
You're welcome. We'll go over the principal reports, we've done that. Another shout out to, actually, the tech department with Chris, we are starting to, I think, at the last couple of board meetings, we're hearing a lot of communication, and my staff, I have the best staff, and they are really thinking outside the box, and we're all thinking of ways to combat the communication issues, especially in the public. And, you know, a couple of our teachers live in South Portland, and South Portland does an amazing newsletter that they put in like their local paper. So we are gonna be starting to look at doing that, and feature articles by maybe some of our staff, and put them in there, and all the wonderful happenings, which is a little different than the superintendent message, but also to educate some of the public around a lot of different things, even around budget and things like that. So, love to have ideas around that, so I just wanted to give a shout out to my tech department on that. Sorry, and I'll pass it that way. And I think that's it. Thank you.
I'd like to add something to the...
School board member Scheiman.
Yes, I just want to, the newsletter that's being sent out, I really appreciate getting that newsletter, because it does give a very good view of what's going on in the schools, and I find it very informative, and I just want to thank the people who are working on that, including yourself, to make that possible.
Thank you. Also, I just, I forgot one little thing, we, there's a couple of different things. SMS was kind of busy interviewing a lot of us up here, mostly our mayor and myself. One of our students at SMS, students put in a grant through Samsung, and they actually, I think, got to the national level, and we got interviewed on basically bicycle safety in bike lanes, and they are promoting to put it in here in Saco, but the most ingenious thing that they came up with is flags, I don't know the whole thing, but they come out of the ground, I guess, so the plows won't blow, you know, plow them over, but if it's like a motion detector, but that, they had to come up with an ingenious way to do that, I think that was Dominic Currit, and I think there was another student, I'm sorry, didn't have it in front of me, do you remember?
It's right here.
John Michael.
It's in your superintendent's...
It's in my superintendent's message.
Dominick.
Superintendent's message? Yeah, John Michael and Milliken and Dominic Currit?
Yep.
Love that.
Dominic interviewed us, so it's kind of Dominic and Dominic going at it here. And I think that's, and that's it, do you have anything else? No? Thank you for reminding me.
I just wanted to say that I was happy to participate in that interview process, and those young men are doing a great job. They even earned a laptop through Samsung that they were, that they did not expect, but it arrived the same day that we did the interview, so just a great job by those students.
And I also want to give a shout out to you for, this is great that you're in our schools, and actually getting interviewed and seeing what's going on in our schools. I think this is, I have not seen that since I've been here, so thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Moving on to the item eight, chairs' report, defer to the vice chair, acting chair.
It was a very short stint, and I don't actually have a report tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item nine, staff report, we have a PATHS program presentation, that is P-A-T-H-S, PATHS program presentation.
There's gonna be two parts to the presentation, the first one is a video that I actually had nothing to do with putting together, this is the, just, the testament to the staff that works in this program, they did this video, and they're pretty talented.
We're going to be two of our students, Alexis and Esme, and hear a little bit about their school experiences before and after the PATHS program. But first, what is PATHS?
Well, our PATHS program is a program that offers extra layers of support to our students. So we provide them with extra social work, we provide them with extra trained staff by having VHPs instead of simply ed techs. We also provide them with a dedicated speech therapist that's involved with their programs, as well as teachers, and access to their peers during the school, so that they can have that extra layer of support, but still have that leash of strength of environment of being around their neighborly friends.
And now, let's hear Alexis.
What did school, it look like for you last year?
Core learning.
Oh, no.
Had like, plubbies.
Oh, what?
Spies. Hot suspensions, a water detection piece, and will never do anything except take control. Skins are all wet classes, and things around wearing a mask.
She was getting suspended once a week, at least. Maybe, mostly every day, I think, in Hong Kong, just attitude disrespecting adults, stuff like that.
Last year, there was a lack of confidence, and there was a lack of being comfortable not in the classroom, or with her peers. I think her fight, well, fight instincts were so quick to kick in, that sometimes it hindered her educational experience, she would miss class due to various reasons.
Now, let's hear her about this year.
You know, she started off the year crying a lot, and very sad, you know, raised it after the nightings, slamming the door, just, you know, rude talking, and just hanging on her time.
She was very, very low, her reading level, like she didn't want to write at all, you know, math was very tricky for her, yeah, she was very low at her levels.
I think this kindergarten experience is really rough. She, for one, couldn't stay focused, couldn't stay still, she had a lot of anxiety, there was a lot of days where she would stay at home, and she was sick, she didn't feel, she, I think, she was anxiety, but yeah, it was a rough, rough time in kindergarten. And I think the girl, one day, she would, because she was being that disruptive, and just had to pick her up, couldn't be here. As we've been talking about our feelings, she, she would just, just be frustrated, that it was just frustrating and angry, because you couldn't describe it, so I was worried that she was taken out of the school, the mainstream school system, I didn't want that for her. But we did have a reading level of PATHS, I thought that was amazing, that's a, that's a great, a great way to keep kids in school, and to be able to learn how to socialize in a regular school setting, and hopefully this is going to help students.
Those are useful things, useful strategies that we use, working with students. General education, from their general education teacher, we're able to kind of coach them through, give them strategies where they might feel frustrated, the gas is overwhelming, the support is there, help them do their academics, and then outside the classroom, we're able to kind of give them strategies that they can use most of the time, most times, so we can practice those sort of controlled environments, and apply it in the classroom.
And I'm very not happy, you helped me with, with my anger, because my anger, I usually yell, or cry, worship is also my problem.
What do you think is the trickiest part of school for you sometimes? When you're on teacher level, what does that mean? Like, what's tricky about that?
Because last year, you were the one that...
Yes, we do love, what is something that you would do that made you go on teacher form, what is, what is part of it that would make you feel upset? What is something that might be tricky?
Um, it could be, maybe, being on a high level.
Yeah, sometimes you would do it, that could be tricky, because maybe you don't want to do it. Ah, okay.
To be able to tell me her feelings, and that was huge, and to be able to talk to me about how she got on class level, or, you know, or even when she is on a teacher level, or, just... And yeah, talking to me about it, and I love that, and religious, tell me she's on a teacher level, if I understand it, I'll try to get her more feedback, it's okay, yeah. So, she's left us here, just, just grossed off a lot, I mean, barely able to hear it in the school, the support here is amazing, I guess, it's...
So she's had the PATHS program this year, she's been, you know, on her reading level, she's been in the classroom a lot more, she, she wants to follow the classroom routine, she has a lot of good support from her VHP, and she, she's doing what she's supposed to be doing most of the time, and she's working hard.
This year, it's a lot better, her attitude in general is so much better, she hasn't gone zero to a hundred in two seconds, this, this year's been so much better, but she's getting A's and Bs, and she hasn't been suspended once.
And this year, she rarely misses class, only because she's not sick, and when she is in class, she puts face, all of her work is done, it's completed, I never have to ask her to get her work done, and not only is it done, but it's done quality and properly, and not only has she grown academically, but maturity wise, she has grown more than any other student I have, and it's really kind of beautiful to see that transition I've had this year.
Way better last year, and really, most of my classes, and she's better than last year.
One thing that I really enjoy about the PATHS program is that we have such a variety of students with really different needs, and that we're able to really look at each student and try to determine what are the specific behavioral and social emotional goals that they're working towards, and then we can get really creative in finding ways to try to address those goals, while we're able to keep them in their schools, in their classrooms, and with their peers. One thing I like to engage our younger students is by using imaginative play to act as scenarios that address the specific social or communication goals that they're working on. Esme is particularly fun to use this approach with, since she'll often work out recent dilemmas that have come up in real life in her play. Here's one. All right, so we have our new student dinosaurs, and you're the teacher, so what do you think these dinosaurs use in? No. Yes, ready, go.
Kid, there is some new kids in someone's kids, okay, calm up, and tell them who you are. Okay. And then, Alyssa. Okay, Alyssa? Go back.
Okay, Alyssa.
Now? One, now, and then, Dinoco? You can go back.
Dinoco?
My name is Dinoco.
Okay, we have Alyssa and Dinoco.
Okay. Okay, the new students are up.
All right.
My name is Alyssa.
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 Oh, Alyssa, okay. The last student is?
Karaka.
Karaka. What are you gonna tell the new students about how to act in class?
Okay, now, you're going to break. Kids, who's going to break? There, don't hurt mom! Yes, it's on, I heard you! You were talking to her? I was not! Don't make me break butter! Hey, you're so rude!
Uh-oh, teacher, you can stop these rude dinosaurs.
Do you want to go to my, the two of you? No. Well, you are.
So how can the dinosaurs not be rude? What should they do?
They should talk together.
Okay, talk together, like that?
Hey, now! Okay, hold over!
I love how they works that out.
Everybody, I, I mean, I feel like you all want to help, like, be the best that she can be, and, you know, and so, working with a team that cares so much, is, has been huge, and, you know, I feel as well, you know, in meetings, I've heard, I feel like, I, and I try to, I try to listen and understand how you do things, so I can try and do it at them as well.
All right, anything else you want to add about the PATHS program?
No, it's, yeah, it's changed my background around so far.
Yeah, awesome.
So, definitely to see more, more...
What is one of your favorite tools or strategies that you use that's going to help you feel better? PATHS provides a day treatment level program where students with high level behavioral and social emotional needs are able to stay in their schools, in their communities, and develop skills to thrive in the least restrictive environment as possible. Through the PATHS program, students are able to increase proficiency in emotional regulation, executive functioning, communication, and problem solving, which empowers students like Esme to exchange tantrums and clever hooks. Although the PATHS program is just beginning to start this year, we're already beginning to see meaningful progress in many of our students. It has been a privilege and an adventure to work with the many amazing teachers, staff, and students who make PATHS what it is. I can't wait to see the future of our students' reading. And this year, we have two of our students, Esme and Esme.
All right, and so, you all have a folder with the PowerPoint that I'm gonna go through, and then there's another, I just gave you the main care billing, because in one of the slides, it's really small, and I figured if you wanted to read through what I'm gonna talk about, it might be easier. I do want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak about PATHS. The last couple of months, there have been some questions brought publicly, and I really appreciate us being able to share all of the information and all of the hard work that has gone into this program, and really, you know, provide that baseline of understanding, so then people can ask the hard questions that we're more than happy to answer. I could talk about this stuff all day, so I will try to make it very brief. So, I also think ahead of talking directly about PATHS, it's important to understand the laws that we have to follow. So IDEA is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which basically, in layman's terms, guaranteed the right of every... guaranteed the right of every child regardless of ability or disability to an education. So with that being said, we have two of, um, we have LRE, which is the least restrictive environment, and then we have FAP, the Free Appropriate Public Education. And as far as PaaS is concerned, these are two of our biggest factors in making sure, um, that we do have education accessible for all children. So I just, um, took this right off of the government, uh, government website. But basically, least restrictive environment is that we have to ensure that, um, students spend as much time as they can with their regular education peers. Uh, just because a child has a disability doesn't mean that they need to be in a classroom by themselves. Our job is to expose them. It's also our job to expose typically developing peers to students with special needs. The other piece is, um, children are entitled to a free, appropriate, public education. So free means the government pays for it, and most of special ed is funded through the government, or through, um, state and federal government. Um, there are some local, uh, you know, local funds that we use, but most of it is, it really does come right from the government based on the IEPs that the IEP team, um, comes up with. Um, it's appropriate. We have to make sure that the public education is appropriate. It's individualized and it's our job to meet those appropriate needs. P is for public. We're in a public school. It's our obligation. And education, so we can educate everybody in a public edu, in a public system, um, not just kids that have regular needs. Alright, so some goals of the PaaS program. Um, for us as a team, uh, when we were looking at forming this, it wasn't just something that we came up with. You know, there was quite a long process, uh, last year, making sure that we had all of the pieces in place, that we were, when we were ready to move forward, we had all of the billing instruments available. Um, so some of the goals that we set out, you know, in the beginning is that we want to be able to provide consistent programming for our neediest learners. So special ed, uh, for behavior programs, you'd have a K-two school and a K-two school. And then when those families transitioned to three-five, programming looked completely different. Um, and regardless of you, we still had phenomenal staff. We still had phenomenal administrators. But there was no transition from one program and what it looked like. There was nothing to replicate it. Um, and so that was pretty big for parents that have students with challenging behaviors to have to reinvent the wheel every school they go to and getting to know a different, a different staff. Um, we wanted to be able to provide ongoing support to school, families, and the community. Um, people are unaware of what supports are available outside of school, and this is something that we would hope to help connect families with those supports that are available in the home. And it's not for, um, for lack of understanding. I think the knowledge just isn't out there, and we didn't have a mechanism in the school to really help parents get these needed services. Uh, rigorous and evidence-based educational, behavioral, and mental health treatments to students. Everything we do is data-based. There's not one decision that we make in any of our programs that's not data-based. All of the, um, the practitioners that we have in the program, um, have a vast experience in working with behavioral and mental health. Um, and our job is to educate students, um, but if they can't sit in a chair, then how are we going to educate them? So we wanted to be able to provide that surrounding rigorous education, not just academics. Um, we want to provide students with an opportunity to engage with typically developing peers. Meetings that I have with parents, this is the number one thing that means the most to them. I've had parents tell me, I don't care about academics. I don't care what my kid learns, but I want my kid to have friends. I want my kid to be invited to a birthday party. I want my kid to know how to walk through the mall and, you know, not have comments made or how to respond to comments. So I think we had to take that to heart as well, is that our job is also, um, to just expose those kiddos to their peers, to know what regular behaviors are. Um, we want to increase the capacity of school personnel to work with all students. There's no regular ed and special ed. There's regular ed and some kids get special services. So that's, that's the push. A homeroom teacher is a homeroom teacher. Um, and we wanted to kind of bust those walls down of special ed and regular ed and what we could be doing. It's important that we understood how mental, our behavior and mental health impacts the access to education, and we need to minimize that impact. If you have a kid that's anxious and isn't coming to school, it, how do you, you know, once you get that kid in school, how are you going to make them comfortable in school if all they're feeling is anx, uh, anxiety? And then the next day, they remember that anxiety, and then they're still not coming to school. Well, it's our job to educate them regardless if they're not coming to school or not, so we have to find a way to reach them. But it's all about understanding how that mental and the challenging behavior impacts that, that access. And then we just want to be resources. We really want to be able to deliver information. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the PaaS program. Um, I'm a pretty straight shooter, and, um, I wanted to clear the air about some of the, um, comments that have been made, whether it's social media in passing, about the differences between what we had before and then what we have now. So I want to make sure everyone knows that behavior programs existed in Saco schools for many years. This isn't the first year you've had a behavior program. And, um, the name PaaS that we used, uh, there was a program, uh, uh, in one of the schools last year that was named PaaS. And so we just adopted the name because we didn't want to recreate the wheel. So PaaS, um, you know, this program specifically has a lot of added supports. But behavior and the PaaS program is nothing new. It's just rebranded. Uh, PaaS has assumed responsibility for classrooms that are already present in each school. No PaaS classroom has taken over any classroom, any other classroom. We have not displaced any related service. Those pa, the four PaaS classrooms were four behavior rooms last year. We've had them built, um, really specifically for students, so I just wanted to make sure that that was understood, that we're, we're taking, we're providing supports that things, to things that were already there. Um, the number of teaching personnel has remained static in the PaaS program. We had four behavior teachers last year. We have four behavior teachers this year. Only those really amazing behavior teachers now have that support of behavioral and mental, um, the wraparound and the parent involvement and just really having people to be able to consult and making these kids, uh, more accessible to their classroom. So any questions that have ever existed about behavior previous to PaaS, um, I hope this clears that up. But if there's any questions, um, you know, I'm more than happy to answer, um, you know, kind of the history of how we got here. So this is a lot here, um, and I'm not going to go through all of this, but the staffing differences across last year and this year. Last year, we just had behavior rooms. Um, and you can see across the four schools, we had a teacher. Basically, the, the mantra of last year is we shared everybody everything. We did not have enough resources, even for the, the folks that we had, um, in district. We, um, you know, we had one BCBA that was split across four schools. We had to contract with another BCBA. We had to share a speech and language pathologist. Sometimes it was across schools. Um, there were special education administration oversight. Um, it was, uh, myself and Dr. Ellis. So it was just really, you know, we were looking at special ed as a whole. Um, this year, it's just a little bit different. Um, so we have one teacher still. We've hired a full-time social worker, and I'll get in a little bit why we needed these positions on top of just the capacity itself. I mean, you all hear that numbers are going up. We wouldn't have been able to maintain the behavior rooms the way that they were run last year. Um, we have a full-time BCBA. Uh, we have a behavioral health professional that's also an ed tech, which, um, that training for an ed tech to become a behavioral health professional is something that we provide to staff. Um, we have three on-staff trainer of trainer, trainees, trainers. Um, so we have been able to do that at no cost to the district. Um, the fire department, part of the becoming a BHP is getting CPR certified. Saco Fire Department has been fantastic about giving us a really good deal on the CPR. Um, and then just having that, uh, the, the oversight of the clinical psychologist. Um, and then also the administrative oversight of the Director of Instructional Support, who's me. And I also happen to be a board-certified behavior analyst, which, um, isn't something you would typically get in a public school. And I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but, um, you know, to have a public school administrator with a behavior background, um, running a day treatment program is, it's kind of a good case. It's kind of a good place to start if you're looking at going into a behavior program. All of the acronyms that I used on top, I just listed on, on the bottom. Um, I don't think all of your packets have it, but I can send it so you can see it and expand it. So now we get into numbers, and I, I am cautious in presenting these numbers, um, because things change. And, uh, one of the first things I want to be very clear is the figures that are, that I present for that annual tuition are based on current or recent values, but they're subject to change at the will of the private school. We don't control the whole tuition. The state will give the private school what they can charge, and then they can decide how much more they want to charge. So we kind of have no say in that. So right now, these are the four K through eight, um, sending, places that we send for out of district for, um, students with significant challenging behavior and medical needs. Um, intense staffing numbers, that also is a threshold. The public school can only, um, you know, you can only have so many staff working with one student. So these are all things we think about. Um, but these are the places that right now through K-eight we have. Um, at Margaret Murphy, the top one, one of the students requires an ed tech, so that's an additional cost to Saco. And then under the services, under Morrison, Sweetser, and CAD, all of those, so we're on the hook for anything that's not main care covered. So there are a lot of other costs there, but they fluctuate depending on whether or not the student is eligible for main care or not and what's able to be reimbursed. Um, so, you know, per kid, we can come up with better numbers than that, but it, it really goes month to month what we owe, just depending on, uh, that main care. These are just the number of students that we currently have attending those schools. Um, I did want to give you an idea because it's not just tuition, it's not just services, it's also the transportation cost that we have to take into consideration. Um, so for these students, not the TA out of district, um, I kept those separate. Um, the transportation costs, not including van payments, maintenance services, or benefits, your cost is a hundred and forty-one thousand, a hundred and eight dollars a year. The cost of just what I have here for these students, not including the services that we end up having to pay for, is four hundred and seventy-two thousand and one hundred and fifty dollars. In, for, you know, if you're sending students out of district, it's not, that's not obscene. Um, you know, these are kind of the ranges that you're looking for, for that type of, that level of service that you're getting. Um, just to give a little picture of what we look at right now. Um, so our anticipated needs this year without PaaS, if we had not brought in this type of service, um, our current out of district would be the one, the two. We had one in transition, and then we have students that need out of district, and there are no openings. So we have to house those students in school because we're their last placement. So regardless of whether or not they belong out of district or not, in that interim, we have to provide day treatment level services. Um, and then these are the additional ones that, uh, would have required PaaS or would have required out of district had we not brought PaaS into place. So, you know, think about that number that I gave you, and now we're adding more on top of it. Um, with PaaS, so this year, we've been able to reduce, um, or keep kids in district. Next year, uh, our intention, and we're already in the works, to bring two students back from out of district based on the programming that we have. And we've already started those transitions. Um, there's potential for one more to come back, um, in the Fairfield, but we're just looking to see, I mean, that's also kid-dependent and timing-dependent and family-dependent. But the capacity for us to absorb that child is there. Um, so estimated, and again, I'm really, I'm really hesitant to put numbers out. Um, but a cost savings just in the numbers that I've given you with us keeping these kids in district on top of all of the other great things that we're doing is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-two. I know that there was a nine hundred thousand dollar, um, goal put on revenue. This is savings without even talking about revenue. So I just want to be really upfront that we are saving money. We are keeping kids in district. We are giving them the least restrictive environment, and you're building the capacity of your staff to be able to handle kids much later in the future. So why do we add the staff? And billing is highlighted, but you can't see it. Billing's the biggest reason, you know, besides the services that we have to provide. I just want there to be a level of understanding of the amount of work that goes into billing and the amount of work that these folks here have put in since, you know, since the beginning of last year. Um, most of these staff too, I'll want to make you aware, is they were just hired. So they started in September. And we're now billing because of the work they've done in the first couple of months. That's not something that typically happens. I mean, we should, these, these people are phenomenal. I mean, they did the testing. I'll go through the whole process. But the fact that we are where we are in the billing process in a first year of a day treatment, it's, it's, it's a really positive thing. This is something that you guys should be really proud of. I'm proud of it. Um, so in order to bill for main care, we needed to add supervisory positions that were accepted by the people that we pre-approve and that we get billed, that we get reimbursed from. The billing process is comprehensive, and most of the, the staff, or most of the responsibilities that we had going into billing were absorbed by our current staff. Um, Celeste Hatch has taken on the billing a hundred percent. Um, she has made herself find information, answers for everything. She basically is that fuel for, for us being able to get revenue. Um, our current BCBA's have taken on more data collection. They've helped come up with systems to make sure that they're aligned with the state. Um, our social workers are the ones that have to sign off on the supervised hours. So we needed social workers in order to prove that we needed, that we needed, uh, the services to get reimbursed. So without those extra social workers, we would not have a, a revenue stream. Um. We have our instructional strategist who created the whole platform for all of our paperwork. Every single aspect of our programming has a piece of paper that goes with it. Um, if we're ever audited, we want it to be a hundred percent compliant and make sure that we could always answer any questions going into anything. Um, and again, we're always happy to share any of that information, uh, keeping student names out of it. Something else I want people to remember is regardless of a student is main care eligible or not, the IEP team can place a student in the PaaS program based on the level of need and significance of disability. We don't place kids in PaaS because they're main care eligible. We place kids in PaaS because they need that level of service. Main care eligibility is, is a bonus. It really is, because we'd have to serve these students anyway. Um, not every child that's eligible for day treatment, um, I just said this, but basically, we're provided, we're required to provide least restrictive environment, free, appropriate, public education, and we really have to be, um, you have to pass the straight face test. Every time you go back to an IEP meeting, you say, well, this isn't going to work. Well, where's the data? Well, let's try this again. You really have to go through steps to make sure that you're covering every least restrictive avenue before you go down a road like a day treatment. Alright, requirements of main care. Um, so these are the qualifications that if we even want to think about requesting for reimbursement, the, um, the reimbursement has to be medically necessary, be order prescribed or recommended by a physician, licensed practitioner of the healing arts. So those are our social workers, our BCBA's, counselors. Those are our healing arts professionals. Uh, it has to be included in, uh, the student's IEP or family service plan, and it has to be medical in nature. So for the PaaS, we bill under what's called Section sixty-five, and that has to be, um, usually that's the one that has the significantly challenging behaviors and has to be medical. So basically, that's the, that's our contingency of getting reimbursement. Um, just a really quick overview to begin the billing. Um, so this, before Celeste can even look at submitting, um, she has to get authorizations done from a company called KeyPro. And then this is a list of things that she needs to do, um, or needs to work with them every single time one of these comes up. So what does it look like to bail main care? Um, each the, of these on the left are all different components of what we're responsible to submit for main care, what we're responsible to maintain, and what we have to have on record anytime a parent requests it as well. So, yeah, and you guys, I mean, you can go through this as well, but some of the ones I want to point out is that a student has to have an IEP. So you have to have that referral process. You have to have state and federal mandates to determine eligibility. A kid has to have an IEP. So that's at the very minimum a sixty-day process. And then, as I was talking about least restrictive environment and free, appropriate, public education, there are steps that we have to take with programming in between a kid being eligible for special ed and then a kid being put in a day treatment program. And we have to prove that we've tried all of those steps. Once we get to this step where we feel day treatment is appropriate, we have to do a comprehensive assessment which finds, um, where the deficits are. Um, this is what the state requires us in order to get that pre-authorization. Again, we're proving that the medical need is there. On top of that, the formal plan has to be developed by the social worker. The clinical supervision has to be done by the social worker and the BCBA. All BHPs require four hours of supervision per month, and that's completed, completed a hundred percent by our social workers, um, in the PaaS program. The behavior plans are done by the board-certified behavior analyst, and I know there's more. Alright. So some more services covered, uh, covered services. So some more services covered, covered services in the school. So this is where I gave you that tab, so if you go into the main care document, it's just that yellow sticky, it brings you right to here in case you want it bigger, and I'm not, I won't go through all of this, but I just wanted everyone to have a clear idea of what it takes to get main care reimbursed, the amount of requirements that we have. Every one of these numbers, every one of these sections is something that we have to have documentation for. The other piece too, is that everything we do, we have to have signed consent. So we're not making these decisions without the families. The families have to sign the consent for, A, for the IEP, they have to sign consent for the comprehensive assessment, they have to sign consent for the treatment plan, they have to sign consent for a behavior plan. So this is a very active team with the family. You know, it's not, it's, a lot of what the, one of the speakers said is that she feels like she's heard, and that's a lot of feedback that I've had as well, is parents feel like they're part of the process now. They can tell you what's going on at home and how it's impacting the school, they see school personnel often, we're meeting at least monthly, and they feel like progress is being made, they feel part of the community. Sorry. All right, so, oh yeah. I trust you. So our total students in the PaaS program, thank you, is thirty-five. We, we set the maximum going into this year at ten students per classroom, because if you have ten day treatment level students in any other facility, you're already maxed over. Usually, one teacher would have six kids in a classroom, but because of the amount of services that we had, and because there were already full classrooms, we figured ten was a really good place to start. So right now, we, at this moment in time, we have thirty-five students in the PaaS program. Out of those thirty-five, twelve are not eligible for main care, but the IEP team has determined that the day level, day treatment level services is as appropriate for them, so we have to serve them. So the total billable amount of students that we have at this point in time is twenty-three. However, if we look down in the bottom, we still have students in process. So although we have, we have, we are billing for some, there are still elements of it we're only in month five, so we still have pieces that we're trying to catch up on. Finding families sometimes is difficult, and that's a big part of it, we have to provide parent interviews for one of the treatment plans, so, you know, that's a piece of why it takes so long. It's hard for parents to come in during the day and meet with all of the staff, but we just wanted you to kind of look, know that the numbers are here, we are moving forward, revenue is coming, it's, 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 it's working. You know, these kids are, are successful. So just some other things, what else has been added? Direct supervision of support related to the PaaS program, so weekly consultation, we have weekly clinic meetings at each school, support and training is provided to all the BHP staffs, we have our BCBA's and our social workers doing district-wide professional development on issues that relate to the PaaS program, but then, that are bigger than the PaaS program, and that's been very well received. Students remaining in their home schools and families remain part of the Saco School community. I can share, in the beginning of the year, there was a family, and we were really concerned about whether we had the appropriate placement for the student. There were lots of meetings, and the team wrapped around this student, and, you know, the parent was understandably upset because we were looking to make a next step of not having the child here. I just had a meeting with the parent last week, and it was like night and day. It just, it's such a good feeling to know that we can have those students in our district, the parents feel like they're part of our community, and it's, they're just Saco School, and we're not sending them away. The development of specialized skills which builds and helps sustain internal capacity. We have some teachers, I can speak to the teachers at Fairfield. Last year, we, we put kind of a pilot into Fairfield with the PaaS program, and we had so many regular teachers whose skill sets have grown, they're now resources for other people in the building, they're setting up level systems in their classroom, so they've taken on the role where they can educate all the kids in their classroom, they're trying to push the supports out, and they're telling us, "No, no, no, I can do this." Like, this is something that, you know, our, the students in this classroom can work on. And then, we want to make sure we're supporting the right of each child to a free appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. So, we can always improve, nothing is perfect. Constructive feedback is important. We often ask parents, you know, what could we be doing differently? What, what processes would work better for you? We ask staff all the time, what could be better for you? What training do you need? What questions do you have? And we're still working on that. I think it's still, we as a school department are still coming around to what PaaS is, and, you know, what PaaS can do for the students. So part of what I need to do, and we as a team, is to be really articulate and define the programming options available to students. So families are aware of what programs, so if it's not PaaS, what other, you know, what other step-down programs are available. And right now, we don't have a concrete definition of what our programs are. Advancement in the step-down programs for when students that no longer need that PaaS level service. We're very thankful for the addition of a composite teacher last year, so thank you for that. And composite is one of those steps that we're moving towards in providing behavioral level needs, but not at that PaaS level. So again, we're keeping kids in school, giving them the level of support that they need, but then also making sure that they're learning those skills and they're able to generalize that into their classrooms. We provide in-house professional development opportunities for all staff members. We've had other schools come and attend our professional development because they've heard about the, how we were starting a day treatment program. So talking about regionalization and talking about really using the resources we have, that's been really fantastic. And then building connections with families, and look for ways to align available community supports with school efforts. It's been very nice to see parents making connections during the meeting, not knowing what services were available, and now we have those staff members that can help connect because they're connected to the community, and they know which paperwork to fill out, and they, they know which support would be appropriate at home. Just a few quotes from our families. Let's leave that up there. So, you know, we, PaaS seems small, it seems insignificant, you know, I feel that our presentation gives the information out, but these families are just as important as all of our other families, these kids are just as important as all of our other kids. And I just want to reiterate that it's our obligation to provide these types of services. If an IEP team decides that a child needs day-level, day treatment level services, whether we have a program or not, we have to pay for that program. So the idea is, let's keep those kids here, let's, you know, try to reduce our costs, let's have some revenue if we can, but basically, we're here to serve kids. It's our job, we're all in this profession, to serve kids, and my role is to make sure that we serve kids with disabilities in the right capacity. And I have to say, I, I don't think people realize how lucky we are to have this staff. This past staff has really stepped, they've just stepped right in and done the job that we needed them to do. We have one student right now that's basically outlying from our beginning movement in trying to get everybody in PaaS, and when we started with an idea of forty to only have one left, I think that's a very big accomplishment since September as well. And then this is our, our symbol. Again, any questions at any time? You know, we had permission from parents to, to share with the, share their students' information, we had more families that wanted to share, but I figured I was going to take more time talking. But if you ever have any, public anybody has questions about the PaaS program and what we do to serve kids, I'm more than happy to answer it. But I do want us to remember that we're here to serve kids, and those decisions are just something we have to live with regardless if we have a day treatment service in-house or not.
Thank you for that presentation. Thank you to all the staff members that are here in attendance, and do all that you do day in and day out for the kids of the community. Celeste, thank you for taking on the Medicare billing, that seems like, like a, a large task, and also thank you to the board. Are there any questions from board members? School board member Shimon?
I have one for you. Given the experience this year, and we're preparing for next year in the budget process and so forth, what differences are, will there be in the way? Is it easier, harder? We learn from experience, obviously, so it would be more refined next year, would it not? And our expectations would be a bit, a bit more refined, or is there a big element of, you really can't tell?
As far as the revenue?
Well, in terms of programming and revenue, yes.
So the programming, I think, is pretty solid.
Yep.
You know, we, we meet to always make sure that the program is meeting the needs of the students, given the context of whatever school we're in, so I think we make adjustments to make sure that it's as the best that we can. As far as revenue goes, I think right now, we have a good idea because we've identified the students that are able to be main care eligible. And then, we have another, another whole section that, of billing available, that once we have kind of had sixty-five on a good, solid, rotating basis, you know, the revenue's coming in, things are going out, there will be another revenue source. So I think it'll be, it'll be clearer than this year.
So, so it is something in a way, not only in terms of services, but the program, we enhance, we enhance it from year to year.
Absolutely.
And that this is the first year of the formal PaaS program, which is probably the hardest to get going, in terms of expectations and everything, but it sounds like in terms of programming that it's been very effective.
And I, I mean, I, I think it has been. You know, I, the parents have shared, the staff has shared, but I think overall, it has, we've kept kids in district and kids are in their classrooms, so that's kind of the, that's the goal.
Are there any other school board member questions? School board member Austin.
First of all, I want to thank you for coming. I'll admit that it's a program that, while I'm aware of it, and I'm aware of the general thrust of it, but I, my knowledge has been rather limited. My question is that, far as the school board is concerned, what would you like to see us doing?
I would love for you to see the program, because then if you're asked by the public, you'll be able to speak to what's happening in the classrooms and honestly, that it doesn't look that different than a regular classroom. You just being here and listening and providing us with a forum to share the information and get it out there, I, I think is huge, and benefits the school board, it benefits the school staff, it also benefits the public. So I think just keeping, supporting, but also giving us those questions if, you know, if you don't think things are going the way that they're expected, I mean, you as a school board, by all means, you know, you have a right to call us out on that and to ask us those hard questions.
Thank you.
School board member Johnston.
I want to thank you, excuse me, I want to thank you as well, because I think this is really important information for us. I can't tell you that I haven't in any way fully digested it yet, but I guess I had sort of the same question as Stan had about how we could become more familiar with it, and so I would like to suggest to Mr. Superintendent, as well as you, that somehow, maybe you can put together some sort of little tour informational presentation again, or, you know, maybe on a more direct basis than here in this big board room, but thank you again, and I'm sure we're going to continue to be wondering how it's, how it's working, and if it's continuing to work as well, and how many more students you might get in the future, and, you know, obviously, there's, the whole thing is a concern to us in terms of the students' learning, but also, we obviously have to deal with the financial aspect of it as well. So I would love to see a little bit more information or some sort of tour that we could go and see what happens, or something along this line. You would know, not me, what that should be.
Absolutely. Be happy to have you, any of you.
Thank you. School board member Walters.
Yes, not a question. I was trying to hold off. I just wanted to sort of echo what the others have said, but really fantastic job. Like, I think it was clear, it was, I have my head around it, which is, I'm excited about it, but just really, just the presentation of it, I think it was clean, clear, great job, guys. I, and I will also say, I really appreciated what the, what PaaS like actually stood for, because I was translating it as, "It's a pathway." And so to now actually know, like, what each letter spells out, I feel like I learned something, so thank you.
That, that art or the emblem was done by our middle school art teacher too. Yeah, she did the, it's Mount Katahdin.
Superintendent DePass. Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, we, so this is my background, so I was a director of special ed for a long, long time. We have amazing special ed teachers, but I was also a behavior teacher and an ed tech. So when I walk into these classrooms, I, I mean, twenty years ago, when I was doing this, it's changed a lot, and, and this group of people, a lot of them are new, a lot of them have changed roles, have been trained. This is, this is an amazing team, amazing team enough that in five months, I have other directors and superintendents asking me to send their kids here. And I'm like, "No, no, 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 we're not ready for that." However, that is a revenue stream, because there's a lot of talk about money and revenue with this, but again, this is about kids. So last year, when we had our first, we had a, we had actually at Fairfield, we had a, we didn't even have a teacher. We had the BCBA in the classroom with ed techs that weren't even BHPs, and amazing.
Good job, Matt.
Unbelievable. So we didn't even have teachers last year. Now we have teachers, and now we have a lot more teachers that want to come here. So it's, I think, you know, kudos to you guys, you're amazing. Thank you, Jess, because you're amazing too. TA, so I've talked to Rainey several times, and they, they also have heard, so they want to continue that program. We've got, there's a lot of work there, but right now, we need to get this solid, so I just want to see how it's spreading, and this, I don't think you realize how it's really moved into the regular classroom. Teachers are getting, this is really worked all around, and thank you all for putting this forward. You know, day treatment was a big, big cost last year, but you saw it with two kids, and there's many more kids that are being benefited from this. So if you do want more, and I, it's great, Beth, that you want to come in, you got to go in the schools and see it happening, because hearing about it and seeing it are two different things. And lastly, there is a new RAD that I'm putting forward. It's a file cabinet for Celeste, because if you've been in her office, there is so much paper with this that we have to do a new file cabinet, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you again to all the staff, and also thank you to the, the children and their families for being a part of that presentation. It's not easy to put yourself out there like that, so thank you to the families that participated. Moving on to agenda, agenda nine B, combined principal director report from December 2018.
So, again, this is your, your monthly principal director report, it's got a lot of information in there. I know you guys like to read it and digest it. At every meeting, all of our directors and principals are here, they can answer questions at any time. And this is also on the website for people at home, when we get it, when you actually look at it, so.
And we are putting the PaaS presentation on the website as well. For all those who were listening at home or having trouble listening to the audio, it will be on the website for review at your leisure.
Correct, and we'll put a question and answer, because we talked about that at our last meetings, we'll put that up there, just in case people have questions, then we can answer those questions.
Do any school board members have any questions about the combined principal director school report from December 2019? And I do apologize that we skipped over this agenda item in December. School board member Johnston.
Trying to keep this short and sweet, because we do have a pretty long agenda, but I would, I'm hoping that maybe we can come back, if there's some questions that we may have accumulated by the time we have our next meeting, we might come back and perhaps bring them to the staff. But I was intrigued by Burn School about the robotic state competition, and the comment here is perhaps we could schedule a team to present to the school board in an upcoming meeting. I would love that. I think that would be a, a really good way for us to, again, know more about what's actually going on in our schools.
Yep, that is scheduled, it's coming in the pipeline, as well as another presentation that we talked about tonight, so that is coming from SMS. So we're trying to put more presentation for students in there, especially around budget, so that's, they're coming in the pipeline.
Thank you.
You'll also be happy to hear that they may be coming before council as well, to give a presentation to the council in my discussion earlier. Moving on to agenda item ten. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Board Subcommittee's, do we have a report from the Personnel Committee?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
No, there's no report.
There's no report. There's no report at this time. No report. Agenda Item C, Infrastructure, there's meeting minutes from 12/19/19.
Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Johnston.
I am on that committee, but I was not able to attend that meeting on the 19th of December. There are some minutes in here, but I thought perhaps one of the people who attended, perhaps the superintendent even, might make a statement or two about that meeting. The minutes are fairly short.
Thank you. Any other school board member just discussion on this? Superintendent DePatsy?
Yep. Again, we, it was, really, the Infrastructure Committee started to brainstorm ways to, again, communicate is our number one word, to work better with the city on many different fronts. One of, we're still talking around capital projects, or things that we need to do to our schools. One of the things we wanted to do is have a joint meeting with the city side of that, which we did have. We had a great meeting, the other, well, I don't know, so many meetings ago. But where we try, we're talking, we haven't decided yet, to try to combine all the different things that need to happen to our buildings. That's still ongoing in our capital planning. I think the biggest thing that came out of our meeting, and from our great Infrastructure Committee, they, which you will be voting on tonight, was to start a steering committee. And it was the idea from the Infrastructure Committee, to bring in three members of our board, with three members from the City Council, myself and the new city manager, to actually start talking about steering us in issues around space. Space is an issue for the schools, we've been talking about it. I think we are being proactive to work with the city and work with our new city manager to say, "These are our needs, how can you help us?" So, because we can't obviously do it by ourselves. So I'm looking forward to that, I'm hoping you guys will vote for that, to put that forward. We do have a meeting scheduled next week to do that. I think that was the bulk of that meeting. I don't know if I missed anything. Stan, I'll go to you.
School Board Member Marsden.
One of the things in terms of the infrastructure, and this is something I just called to everybody's attention, that is, we have an infrastructure committee that's
Make sure to speak into the mic.
Part of, is that, I'm sorry. Am I not speaking into the mic? I'm sorry, I apologize. The infrastructure committee, we have an infrastructure committee that's part of the school system, the school board. That's what's looking into the new school. In order to do that, it's going to have to work with the city on a number of different issues, and thus, it becomes a concern to the infrastructure committee for the city council as a whole. One of the things that we need to do is to make sure that we're keeping separate these new school from the city as a whole. It is a part of the city as a whole. It will be impacted on the city and by the city as a whole. But our committee is going to be putting together committees that have to do with this new school. And what we're going to try and do is have this all meld together, so that it makes sense for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10D, Strategic, No Meeting Minutes, is there a report?
Mr. Mayor, we did meet yesterday.
School Board Member Johnston.
And we started to tackle some policies that had been, basically, the meeting had been postponed from sometime in December, so we're all trying to get up to speed a little bit more on this. But a lot of the policies, if not all of them, related to certain medical issues or situations. We came out of that meeting feeling like we needed a little bit more input from the nurses, and perhaps others, maybe the physician, the district physician. But in any case, we didn't really feel prepared to bring anything here tonight to go forward, but we will definitely get back on it at our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Just got one thing to add.
Superintendent DePatsy.
Yeah, we also, in your packet, you'll see what we're starting to do is start, our strategic plan ran out, so we are starting that whole process again, to develop our new strategic plan, or revise our strategic plan. So the real, we just started, in your packet, kind of talks about what that process is and the timeline. We can go over this more or less down the future, but we have talked to, I've talked to Burns, and we're working on, like, a, it's a basically, a, it's a way to get information from all the stakeholders, and we're starting with the schools first, and then we're going to branch out into the community, and we'll develop a stakeholder group as well. But Burns, we actually just talked to all the staff there about the strengths, needs, opportunities, and worries, how to move forward with what's going to happen in the next five years. More to come.
Thank you. Any other discussion, school board members? Moving on to Agenda Item E, Negotiations.
We are ongoing, but the end is in sight.
Thank you. School Board Liaison to the City Council.
Yes, I continue to keep the council apprised of what we're doing. In fact, I mentioned the PATHS presentation tonight, and I hoped that they would come to it, and maybe they'll see it electronically, because my goal as liaison is to try to get us closer. We are independent of the council, but we also work together, we can't get much done without each other. So I tried in meeting with people in various ways to bring us to a better understanding of the overall situation.
Thank you. School Board Member Shimon. Seeing no other committee reports, moving on to Agenda Item 11, Old Business. We have Item A, Second Reading of Policies, is there a motion? School Board Member Walters.
I move we approve the second reading of policy, JICE Student Publications, JICE-R Student Publications Procedures, JICJ Student Use of Cell Phones and Other Electronic Devices, JICK Bullying, JICK-R Bullying Administrative Procedure, JICK-E1 Bullying and Cyberbullying Reporting Form, JICK-E2 Saco School Department Bullying Investigation Form, JICK-E3 Bullying and Cyberbullying Remediation Form, and JICK-E4 Saco School Department Bullying Reporting Investigation and Intervention/Resolution Process.
Thank you. There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by School Board Member Walters, second by School Board Member Johnston. Any discussion? School Board Member Marsden.
This is a question. One of the things that the school board is working on, I'm sorry. One of the things the school board is working on is communications. One of the areas that a question came up about, in terms of communications, is this very one, that's the presentation and reading of policies to the public. My guess is, if I was to ask each one of you out there what it was that we just read, about the only thing you would be able to answer was that there was something read called policies. And the question is, for the public, and I address all those out there, too, for the public, what do you want to know about the policies? The exercise that we are going through up here on voting on them, is that sufficient? If it isn't, then what would you like? And what do you need? Thank you.
Thank you. School Board Member Shimon.
I would like to, just like to mention that everything in those policies is available to the general public. Is that my understanding? It's all online.
Yes, it's all online.
Yeah, so there's nothing that's in any of them that people can't find out about. These are pretty complex, these policies. So for people to know the whole thing would be, even if you're on the committees like me, it's very hard to understand the whole thing. But it could well be that people want to know more about individual policies, and you have a direct right to see it, see them, and to ask questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? When the, when the agenda is put out in the, on the website, are the policies included in the agenda?
Yes, they're all, and they're all linked, so you can click on them.
Thank you. Seeing no more discussion, roll call, vote. School Board Member Leary.
Yes.
School Board Member Walters.
Yes.
School Board Member Shimon.
Yes.
School Board Member Tardif.
Yes.
School Board Member Marsden. School Board Member Johnston. Motion passes 6-0. We are now to the Old Business, Item B, Increasing Staff Capacity to Support Communications Effort Discussion. School Board Member Walters.
Yes, so this was in follow-up to the great conversation that I think we had in workshop last week, which I really appreciated. And I know it wasn't included in the minutes, but I had sent out sort of what I, what I heard in the meeting, and some of the suggested strategies that I think we discussed and identified. And one of, I think one of the key things that came up is a strategy that sounded like everyone was in support of, was we certainly need to have some capacity in the form of, whether it's a communication manager, or some position of some sort, to help support our communication efforts. So I think this was just an opportunity for us to have this conversation a little bit further, as we're entering into our budget season, if we wanted to consider putting in a RAD around this body of work, or really just to, just hear if, I'm jumping to a conclusion that maybe is an assumption, but just want to hear from other folks.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the matter? School Board Member Tardif.
I don't think it's the proper time to do it. We've talked a lot also about joining with IT, about them coming on a website like the city has, to come out with more information. And I think rather than hiring somebody else, we should try that at first, see how that works. Seems to work well for the city, and I don't see any reason why we can't do the same thing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? School Board Member Shimon.
Yeah, I personally would favor hiring a halftime person. I think this is such a critical issue, we also have seen, I believe in going the way our Tardif just spoke as well. But this issue is so big, that I don't even think we should wait till next year. I think that we should fit it into our budget, I understand it could be, it can be done, there may be a way, a trade-off on this, without increasing the budget. But I just think it is so important to get the process started of communicating on issues that are complex and difficult, and that people have strong feelings about in the community, sometimes without full knowledge. And I think we need to do that. That's my, my personal feeling is, we should not wait till next year.
Thank you. School Board Member Marsden.
One of the startling things to me one morning, not too long ago, was when the Journal Tribune announced they were no longer going to be publishing their newspaper. Now, they're out, but they weren't even going to be on the web. I looked around, we don't have any radio stachyves either. There is no publication, no news media of any kind, in Saco, a community approaching 20,000 people. Where do you go to get your information? That's a question. Where do you go to get your information? About this meeting, for example, about the city council. In order to be able to get information out to the community as a whole, which is extremely important, particularly as it applies to the schools, which is at the core of our community, in order to get that information out, we need to start doing something very different from what we've done in the past. And thus, the need for communications program and communication people, who, that's what they do for a living, that's what they know, that's what they help us out, to get the word out, to what we're doing, what we need, why they might be interested, or should be interested. And to, and also, in particular, getting to groups that don't come into the schools, because they don't have children there, they're not on the school board, they, they just aren't there, they're on a bus tour someplace. That's what this is all about, and it's something that is not an enhancement. It is not something that makes things nice. It is something that's essential in the community that we have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? School Board Member Leary.
I agree with Steve fully. I think it's something that we need to get on board sooner rather than later, because we are, we're all aware of the issues that are out in the community, the information that's not true. We need some sort of outlet in order to get the truth out there. You know, what Jess's presentation tonight, it, we've heard a bunch of untruths about the special ed department and what's happening with PATH, and she straightened everybody out tonight, and we need more of a way to do that. And I think, I think we should start with a halftime person also. And I truly believe that whoever that person is, has to have some background in education, because initially, I thought, you know, it would be a good idea to see if we could meld with the city, but they're two completely separate entities, and different goals, and different directions, and so I truly believe that it has to be someone that has an idea of what education is about, in order to help our communication issue.
Thank you. Any more discussion? School Board Member Johnston.
I think that we are all fairly, well, at least most of us, fairly assured, assuredly feel that we need to do something. And I have to admit that before this conversation tonight, I hadn't thought too much about, since the last meeting, about whether that would mean some kind of working with the city, or doing something of our own separately, doing something in a full-time position or a part-time position. I guess I feel like we need to explore all those possibilities, and we may end up saying we absolutely need to have our own person who's got an education background, as Lynn suggests, and, and we, you know, should probably set some goals around what we expect this individual to do. What is it that we have somehow not managed to do in the past, that we're looking for this individual to do? So obviously, I think we really need something, we need somebody. I think we should probably brainstorm a little bit more about what that individual should, what their task should be, what their performance, what they should perform. Thank you.
Thank you. School Board Member Shimon.
I agree with Beth Johnston on this, that we should not, we need it, but we need to think it through, in terms of what the position is doing, and come to a consensus on that. So I, I'm not in that much of a hurry, I think we should, but I don't think we should put it off either. I mean, it's just, we need to work on it.
Thank you. School Board Member Leary.
Then maybe we should, I suggest we charge the, I think it's the Personnel Committee, to come up with a job description of what we think we need, and then bring that back to the board, and then we move from there.
I think the, I think you have consensus on that.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the matter? School Board Member Tardif. School Board Member Tardif.
I'd just like to mention, remind the board that we're operating on a shoestring now because of things that have happened, and it's not time to hire somebody else, not at this time.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, New Business Item A, Elections of School Board Chair and Vice Chair. Do we have a motion? School Board Member Leary.
I would like to make a motion that we elect Art Tardif as Chair.
There's been a motion to nominate School Board Member Art Tardif for School Board Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion made by School Board Member Leary and seconded by School Board Member Shimon. Any discussion?
Could you repeat those again for my ears?
There's been a motion made by School Board Member Leary to nominate School Board Member Art Tardif for the position of School Board Chair, and this motion was seconded by School Board Member Shimon. Any discussion? School Board Member Johnston.
Are you looking for additional nominations at this point, or just conversation about this particular nomination?
You've got two nominations, is that what you have so far?
You have one nomination, Stan.
One nomination.
I think how you did it last time was, okay.
For my...
I wanted to ask a question before we start proceeding.
Just Superintendent DePatsy, how did they?
Yeah, so I think what we made, so I think the, like we did last time, we had one nomination, and then I think another nomination came forward, you voted on that, and then they were voted on at the, you know, we went down through in succession. Just looking at, do you remember that? Just want to make sure you guys are, so Stan, if you want to make a nomination, you can do it now.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm understanding what it is, the procedure, pardon me. The procedure that's being followed, which is different from any of the ones that we followed up until now, since I've been watching the school board. Okay, if we nominate one person...
You nominate two.
That's what I want to know. Did I nominate a second person?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
So when I started to do that, I was being signaled differently, okay? And at the end of the nominations, by the way, I do want the opportunity to raise questions to the nominees. I stated this in our discussion in the last meeting, that that was what I was expecting that people would be able to do, would be able to raise questions to the nominees so that all of us would be able to know a little bit something about the people that are being nominated. Therefore, I nominate, I nominate Beth Johnston for Chair.
There's been a second nomination by School Board Member Mazdin to nominate School Board Member Johnston for Board Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's been a motion to nominate made by School Board Member Mazdin and seconded by School Board Member Walters. Any further nominations? So we have two nominations. We have one for School Board Member Johnston for Board Chair, and then we have one for School Board Member Tardif for Board Chair. The original motion was to nominate School Board Member Tardif, and then there was an amendment for School Board Member Johnston. How they normally deal with Robert's rules, we deal with the amendment first and then go back and deal with the main motion. So I don't, I'm not sure how you ran it last time, but it didn't seem like there was more than one nomination in the past. Oh, there was, okay. So, all right.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think the way we did it last time was to, you would ask for a roll call for the first person and then for the second person, or that's, I believe, how we did it last time.
Okay, following the previous path for the school board, we'll deal with the first motion. The first nomination was School Board Member Tardif. The motion was made by School Board Member Leary and, excuse me, seconded by School Board Member Shimon at this time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none from the right, from the left. School Board Member Mazdin, this is your chance to ask the questions that you had said you had of the nominated candidates.
Last time we met here, a couple weeks ago, and we talked about all of this, I said that one of the things about the Chair and the Vice Chair, even if there was only one nominee, but we've got more than one at this point, that I wanted to be able to raise to them some questions about them in that position.
Stan, can you just speak into the mic? Speak into the mic, please, there.
Am I speaking into it? Okay, I'm sorry.
Just pull it real close.
Fine.
Real close.
I'm trying, thank you. And thus, I'm coming forward with some of the questions that I have. And to start off with, I'm not intending that I be the only one to raise questions. Anybody on the school board that wants to raise a question to any of the nominees should be, feel free to come forward and do so. One of the things that I want to raise is that under the changes that have been made in the Charter, the School Board Chair, okay, that we're talking about right now, is not the same as it was under the previous system that we had. So my question to each of the nominees is, what do you envision to be the role of the Chair under the current system that we are starting to operate under? Who wants to go first?
School Board Member Tardif.
Well, there's only one role, and that's to represent the board, not to represent yourself. And that's the only role the Chairman has. It may help out with the agenda, but he should be representing the whole board. He doesn't speak for himself, he speaks for the board. And not just two members, but all of them.
Thank you. School Board Member Johnston.
Excuse me, I agree with Art that a Chair and a Vice Chair do not speak for themselves exclusively by any means. I think that the role of Chair and Vice Chair can be very instrumental, however, in being that conduit between the Superintendent and the rest of the board. And I was very encouraged last week to hear the Superintendent say that he felt it would be very important to have a Chair that, who would be frequently in contact with him or have frequent meetings with him. And I think that certainly can be extended to meetings with the Chair and the Vice Chair I think the agenda is a very important item, and I personally would love to see the agendas not adjusted so much as this one was tonight by the time we got through all of the documents. But I think that we, if we are Chair and Vice Chair, whoever we are, we need to be working really closely with the Superintendent, and again, along the lines of communication with the district as a whole, the board itself. We need to have that as a top priority, I think. There's a lot of issues to stay on top of, so it means a fair amount of time commitment and a regular approach to meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes.
School Board Member Mazdin.
If you find yourself in disagreement with the Superintendent, how are you going to handle that?
School Board Member Tardif.
Remember, you said you're speaking for the board.
That's correct. So I bring it back to the board, and the board decides what they want. I don't make the decision. That's what the board is for.
School Board Member Johnston.
I think a person in the position of Chair and/or Vice Chair, first of all, needs to be straightforward with the Superintendent and express their opinion. But again, as Mr. Tardif just said, we, in the position of Chair or Vice Chair, do not really make the decisions. We need to share the information. Back to the board.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm still cutting.
School Board Member Mazdin.
This board has had under discussion during the last month, changing the way in which the committee's structure would function. We do a lot more using workshops. So my question to the candidates are, how would you go about implementing this, and how would you come up with the agendas for the workshops?
School Board Member Tardif.
Well, I think that's, again, something that's brought to the board, and they decide how they want to do it. And the Superintendent has to be included. You have to work together with him and the board, and how often you want to have them, so we can discuss a lot of the things in public before they even come up to vote on. It was my suggestion to come up with this anyway, but I'm willing to cooperate with the board on any way they want to handle it. It ain't just what I want, it's what the board wants. And I think it's good to get it out to the public. When you have a school board meeting, it's just as important as a regular meeting to have your workshops, to discuss these things amongst the whole board. And the public hears what's going on.
School Board Member Johnston.
I think the main thing is to keep that workshop format or plan as right in the forefront of our minds, because a few years ago, we started out on a plan to have workshops much more frequently than we ended up having them. There were things that, there were reasons for that. We had very full agendas on issues that we needed to vote on. But I think if we keep it in the forefront, that this is how a lot of our information, a lot of our communication is going to occur, this new initiative that we have, I think we will probably stay on target a little bit better with that. In terms of how to create the agendas, I would imagine the things that come up that need to be brought to our attention as well as that of the public in a workshop format, that would be the priority.
Any further discussion? School Board Member Mazdin.
A follow-on in terms of the comments that have just been made, and that is, how are topics going to be selected to be discussed at the workshop? Is everything going to be done that way, or just certain topics?
School Board Member Tardif.
Well, I mentioned before that most of that can come out of committees. You have so many committees that they could bring it to a workshop, whatever they want to bring, and it can be discussed with the whole board. Now you go to a committee meeting, the three members that are on the committee discuss it, and it comes before us, nobody else on the board has heard it. If your committees want to bring something up, they can bring it at a workshop, and we can discuss it there, and it's in the public when you do it.
School Board Member Johnston.
I'm going to agree with Art. I think that a lot of the good work that's done, a lot of the really important work that's done comes, occurs in committees. Now, a lot of times, other board members can attend, but very often, they have other things to do and don't. So to get the information from the committee to the board as a whole, and perhaps before some sort of issue shows up on our agenda, that's a good place for that to occur, the workshop. So certainly, that could be, again, another avenue for us to get information out, for committee members, or maybe the Chairs of those committees, for sure, to come and bring an issue up to the Chair and Vice Chair and say, we'd like to discuss this, and the Superintendent, of course.
Thank you. School Board Member Mazdin.
In this case here, I want to know your thoughts as far as keeping the board informed about things that you may find out that aren't necessarily official yet, but the Superintendent has discussed with you the possibility of starting a new program. When do you tell the rest of the board that this is in the thinking process?
School Board Member Tardif.
Gee, I feel like President Trump here. You think I'm going to get an extra $200 for doing this or something?
I know what my answer is, and I know what you're going to give.
Yeah, right.
But I want them to know what your answer is.
My answer's simple. It comes to the board when you hear it. If you think it's good for the board, you bring it to the board. If you don't agree with the Superintendent, you tell them right away, but you can still bring it to the board. Let them decide. Let them make the decision. I don't want to take the rap for everything.
Thank you. School Board Member Johnston.
I think essentially what we want to do is to have the Chair and/or Vice Chair bring information to the board as quickly as makes sense to do so. There may be certain things that, I mean, obviously, we might be needing to discuss certain things in a confidential setting, but I think in general, I believe you said a new program or something like that, Stan. I would think that would be something that the board should probably know about as soon as possible.
Thank you. Further discussion? Would it be helpful for me to read in the board officers the duties of the Chair? Would that be helpful? Okay, thank you. Duties of the Chair. A, sign the instruments, acts, and orders necessary to carry out state requirements and the will of the school board. B, consult with the Superintendent in the planning of the school board meeting agendas. C, confer with the Superintendent on crucial matters that may occur between school board meetings. D, appoint subcommittees and serve as ex officio member of all committees. E, call special meetings of the school board as necessary. F, be the public spokesperson for the school board at all times except as responsibility is specifically delegated to others. And G, in the absence of the mayor, the Chair will preside at and be responsible for the orderly conduct of school board meetings. The Chair shall have the right, as other school board members have, to offer motions, discuss questions, and vote. That is in your policy. BDB, page 1. School Board Member Mazdin.
Okay. The only thing I want to say at this point, I don't have another question for them, but I want to thank both of them for being so kind to answer them. And as I said, I already know what they were both going to answer, or at least I felt I did. I wanted you to know what they were thinking. I want you out there to know. That's part of the communications that we're talking about.
Superintendent DePatsy.
Just thought I'd give a little input, since my name was thrown around quite a bit. So I'm going on my fourth Board Chair. So this, I'm going on my fourth board chair. And so this is, this is kind of, I've got a lot of input into this process. So one of the things is whoever is going to do it needs to devote the time. And the time is also coming in, so there's a lot of stuff going on in this district that I need to, like a sounding board to either one of you. I'd love the feedback. Two, even though we've tried, most of my past board chairs did not have the time to do that. And also, did not get the agendas back in a timely manner. Celeste and I wait a lot, and maybe we need to do it on our part, maybe a week earlier. But it's still up to the, like, there are a lot of adjustments to the agenda, but I get those adjustments the day of, because some people don't read the agenda till the day of the meeting. So I think everyone needs to be a little bit more looking at those agendas. So I think those are really important aspects of the thing. And the agendas, I mean, we put those through, and you all can send stuff to us, or usually goes to the board chair, and then they direct me to put it on the, on the, on the agenda. So I think those are important things. And also, if you don't, it's really hard to get information out to the rest of the board, because you can't do it in an email. And I've invited, I talked to Beth and Stan, because that was part of our conversation. You can always come in, and I can fill you in on what's going on in the district, and answer any questions anytime. So just thought those are important points to also consider.
Thank you. Any further questions? So at this point, we have two nominations. And as I understand from previous times, we're going to go through and take a vote on both of these and move on from there. So the first nomination for school board chair was School Board Member Tardif. Motion was made by School Board Member Leary, seconded by School Board Member Shymon. Moving on from discussion, roll call vote. School Board Member Leary.
Yes.
School Board Member Walters.
Yes.
School Board Member Shymon. School Board Member Tardif. School Board Member Mazden. School Board Member Johnston. The motion passes 3-2-1 abstention. The second nomination was made by School Board Member Mazden, seconded by School Board Member Walters. And that is to nominate School Board Member Johnston for the school board chair. Seeing no discussion, moving for a roll call vote, School Board Member Leary.
No.
School Board Member Walters.
No.
School Board Member Shymon.
No.
School Board Member Tardif. School Board Member Mazden.
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston. The motion fails 2-3-1 abstention. Moving on to the nomination of the Vice Chair. Is there a motion, or a nomination, excuse me? School Board Member Mazden.
I nominate for Vice Chair Emily Waters. Walters, Walter. Okay, where else?
Are you nominating School Board Member Walters?
The way I'm supposed to read it. Okay. I move to nominate Emily, School Board Member Emily Walters, Walters, for the position of School Board Vice Chair.
There's been a motion made for School Board Member Walters by School Board Member Mazden. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by School Board Member Johnston. Are there any other nominations? School Board Member Leary.
I nominate Steve Shymon.
School Board Member Shymon has been nominated by School Board Member Leary to serve as the Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
That motion has been seconded by School Board Member Walters. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we'll move into discussion. Any discussion? School Board Member Walters.
Well, for starters, thank you, Stanley, for the nomination, and Beth for the second. I appreciate that. However, I am going to decline the nomination, if I'm allowed to do so. Just, okay. But thank you.
School Board Member Walters has declined nomination as presented by School Board Member Mazden and School Board Member Johnston. School Board Member Johnston and Mazden, are you willing to pull back your motions?
Well, unfortunately, it looks like we need to. I was thinking that Emily might be of the mind to serve in that role, but if she's not able to, then she's not able to. So I withdraw my second. Stan, did you withdraw your nomination?
Yes.
Thank you for the withdrawals. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? School Board Member Johnston.
I move we nominate myself, Beth Johnston, for the position of School Board Vice Chair.
There's been a motion made by School Board Member Johnston to nominate herself for the position of Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second.
School Board Member Mazden has seconded. Are, any discussion? School Board Member Mazden.
I said I would do this for both, and I am.
There might be another nomination.
What's that?
There may be another nomination.
Oh, that's why, are you, is there a nomination?
He didn't ask you.
Let me check. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair of the school board? Seeing, oh, School Board Member Tardif.
Well, I hate to see anybody run on the polls. They'll have, win.
School Board Member Tardif has nominated a School Board Member Leary to serve as Vice Chair. Is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. So there are two nominations at this point. School Board Member Shymon has been nominated by School Board Member Leary and seconded by School Board Member Walters. And School Board Member Johnston has been nominated by herself and seconded by School Board Member Mazden. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I'm going to move to School Board Member Mazden for his four questions to the candidates. School Board Member Mazden. Your opportunity to ask your questions. Please speak into the mic for the folks listening at home and the folks in the audience.
The first question I have to the nominee is, you're the Vice Chair. What do you see as the primary role of the Vice Chair to the school board?
I believe if you read the policy on that, it's to take the place of the Chair if the Chair can't function. But I do see a bigger role for it. But it's not, I don't believe listed, I don't believe it's listed in the policy.
No, it's just perform all the duties of the Chair.
I think that because of the fact that we're embarking on a communications effort, that you need a Chair and a Vice Chair. I think you need the both. And I, you know, the ranking here is the Chair and then the Vice Chair, so I defer to the Chair. But the Chair may need some assistance on some things that I would be glad to help with. And so I see it as helpful in a role as liaison to the council. And I, it helps in giving, providing a position to be of assistance in that way.
Thank you. School Board Member Johnston.
Clearly, the Vice Chair does take over and fill the shoes of the Chair when that is necessary. So those responsibilities would fall to the Vice Chair in the event that it needed to occur. But I see it as a much larger thing. I feel that the Vice Chair and the Chair can work together to, again, provide an information network to the rest of the board. Many years ago now, I was Vice Chair when we were not the Saco School Department. We were part of RSU 23. And at that point in time, regardless of whatever else was going on, that Chair worked very closely with me to keep me very informed in what was going on in the district. And I think that helped, again, to spread the information out to the rest of the group. So I definitely think there's a communication role that the Vice Chair can participate in.
Thank you. For the benefit of the school board members and folks, do you, would you like me to read the duties of the Vice Chair according to policy?
Not really.
No? No?
Go for it.
The duties of the Vice Chair. In the absence of the Chair, the Vice Chair shall perform all duties of the Chair. School Board Member Mazden, do you have more questions? No more questions? Any further discussion?
I don't have any further questions, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll do this again. There have been two motions made. The first one is for School Board Member Shymon, motion made by School Board Member Leary and seconded by School Board Member Walters. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, School Board Member Leary.
For Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
School Board Member Walters?
Yes.
School Board Member Shymon?
I'll say yes.
School Board Member Tardif? School Board Member Mazden? School Board Member Johnston? The motion passes 4-2. Moving on to the second nomination of School Board Member Johnston, made by School Board Member Johnston and seconded by School Board Member Mazden. Any discussion? Roll call vote, School Board Member Leary?
No.
School Board Member Walters?
No.
School Board Member Shymon?
No.
School Board Member Tardif?
Yes.
School Board Member Mazden? And School Board Member Johnston?
If I understand what's happening, and this is a vote for me for Vice Chair, yes.
Thank you. And the motion, the motion fails 4-2. Or 2-4, rather, excuse me. So congratulations to School Board Member Chair Art Tardif and School Board Member Vice Chair Steve Shymon. I'm sorry.
I think it was 3-3.
There you go, 3-3. Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
School Board Member Tardif.
Just a point of order. When I pass, I should be, I should be returned to me to vote. I can't just abstain on something like that. I have to vote. Not that it matters now, but it's just a point of order. When you pass, you have to come back to me after you go to everybody else.
I didn't hear that you passed.
I passed.
On this?
No, 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 on my previous ones, when my name was up.
I took that as an abstention.
I know, you can't do that. It's either a yes or a no, and I just passed, so you go to the next two, then you have to come back to me.
We've abstained many times in roll call votes.
But I wasn't abstaining.
Because of personal conflicts, but...
Right, but I wasn't abstaining.
In the future, when you say pass, I'll know to come back to you.
Okay, but it's the difference between an abstention and a pass.
Point taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
I'm going to look to the clerk to get a roll, a vote, in case I heard it incorrectly. Celeste, would you read the, the, the roll call? As I may have heard something differently than some others.
So Lynn was no, Ellen was no. Steve was no. Art was passed, yes.
No, no, not on this one. I voted yes twice.
That is a 3-3, that is a tie. That puts me in the position of voting.
Because you already had a 4-2.
I believe you can break the tie, Mr. Mayor.
But it was already 4-2.
I think there's been a, there's been a motion, excuse me, there's been a motion made and passed for School Board Member Shymon for Vice Chair. And the second school board member was a 3-3 tie. And I believe that motion would fail in case of a tie.
Yes.
Right. And I think you have a right to do that.
So as I read before, the School Board Member Chair is Art Tardif, thank you. And the School Board Member Vice Chair is Steve Shymon.
Mr., point of order, Mr. Mayor?
School Board Member Johnston.
I'm still confused with that last vote. I thought it was a 3-3 tie.
It was a 3-3 tie.
But you have a right to break the tie, Mr. Mayor.
And someone has to, I think.
I would think because the previous school board member passed, and this, I mean, I can, I can, I can vote, but I think it would be disingenuous for me to vote on a school board chair when I'm not on the board. And the board has already nominated and passed an official candidate in Steve Shymon, and the second candidate has tied, and therefore has not passed. So therefore, I believe that it dies.
What was the vote of the first one?
4-2.
What?
We can have it, we can have the roll call red back, if that helps.
I don't know, I don't remember what it was.
It was 4-2.
Was it?
So four of you voted for Steve, two opposed.
Okay.
And then 3-3 tie. And I think what the mayor's saying is, there's no sense, he doesn't have to vote to do it because it's already, the first candidate already won. If it was 3-3-3-3, then the mayor would vote.
Yep.
And exercise that new power that you have in the Charter.
So, that's the way I understand it. I, if the board would rather me vote, I'll do that.
Well, it's not going to make any difference.
It'll just go, it'll just go back to a, to another round of voting. So it's, I'll stick with the 4-2 passing of the first candidate, and the nomination on the second candidate is a, fails for a tie. Or ties, rather, excuse me. Moving on to Agenda Item B, nomination of probationary teacher. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
School Board Member Johnston.
I move we approve the nomination of Austin Joyce, Saco Middle School teacher, for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year, and issue a probationary one contract.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made to move the nomination of Austin Joyce, Saco Middle School teacher, for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year, and issue probationary contract. A motion's been made by School Board Member Johnston, seconded by School Board Member Walters. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, School Board Member Leary?
Yes.
School Board Member Walters?
Yes.
School Board Member Shymon?
Yes.
School Board Member Tardif?
Yes.
School Board Member Mazden?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston? Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to the third item, Item C. This is the Joint Infrastructure Steering Committee. Is there a motion? School Board Member Tardif?
Move we authorize the school board members of the Infrastructure Committee to participate in the newly formed Joint Infrastructure Steering Committee, which includes the superintendent, two city councillors, the mayor, and city manager.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Motion made by councillor, excuse me, School Board Member Tardif, and seconded by School Board Member Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, School Board Member Leary?
Yes.
School Board Member...
Yes.
School board member Walters?
Yes.
School board member Shimon?
Yes.
School board member Tardif?
Yes.
School board member Mazden?
Yes.
And school board member Johnston. Motion passes six, zero. At this time, we're moving on to agenda item 13. Enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of duties of employees pursuant to one MRSA 4056A with no action. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
School board member Johnston?
I move we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of duties of employees pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056A with no action.
There's been a motion made to move into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
And a motion made and seconded. A motion made by school board member Johnston, seconded by school board member Walters. We also have two other executive session items. Do you tend to handle them independently, or all at once?
We usually read them here, and then we come in and out. Because there's no action, we won't come back up here for anything.
Okay. Is there a motion to enter executive session for pursuant to, or excuse me, for discussion of labor contract negotiations pursuant to one MRSA 4056D with no action? School board member Johnston?
I move we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of labor contract negotiations pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056D with no action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by school board member Johnston, seconded by school board member Tardif, to move into executive session for labor contract. Is there a motion to move into executive session for the discussion of legal rights and duties of the Saco School Department pursuant to one MRSA 4056E with no action?
I move we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of legal rights and duties of Saco School Department pursuant to one MRSA 4056E with no action.
Motion's been made by school board member Tardif. Is there a second? Motion's been seconded by school board member Johnston. Any discussion on these three items? Moving into executive session, roll call vote, school board member Leary?
Yes.
School board member Walters?
Yes.
School board member Shimon?
Yes.
School board member Tardif?
Yes.
School board member Mazden?
Yes.
School board member Johnston. Motion passes six, zero to move into executive session on the three motions before us.